So, on our agenda tonight is approve the agenda, approve the minutes of April 22nd, warrants, correspondence, work proposal, office, town hall opening to public, new town hall transitional funding approval, signage at the town hall construction site. Conservation of additional land at Quarry Hill Natural Area, award pickup truck bid, L E M P approval, public comment, executive session legal adjourned. Can I entertain a motion to accept the agenda?
Make a motion.
Any discussion? Bob? Bob?
He's speaking.
He's muted. Unmute yourself. Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes of April 22nd, 2021. I only had one thing on there, when we had names for fixing for the L E M P approval, there's Beth Bratcher, when it should be Beth Traver. T R A V E R. That's the only thing I saw for the director of Oak Hill. Anybody else have anything to add?
I didn't see anything. I'll make a motion.
Put a second copy of the minutes in there, because under the traffic ordinance, there was a section of it that was deleted. So I added that in the second set of minutes in the packet, the select board packet.
Oh, that you amended it, you found the mistake and you fixed it?
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
There's a draft right behind it.
I must have missed it, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to do, accept the minutes, approve the minutes with the amendments by Megan and by Angie.
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
All right. Accounts payable for 26 to 430, $14,643.54. Green Mountain Power, 143998. Kuzic River Hydro, 20053508. New England, I can't even read my own writing. Municipal research, was it? No, it wasn't beamers. $942.50. Stamps, 200. Cell phone, 42132. Beamers, $4,620. Can I entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept warrants.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So that's for $14,643.54. Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Accounts payable for $58,091.29. Bayes and Brothers Trucking for $30,900. Comcast for $569.41. Main Street Bridge, $1,314.20. Mowing, $3,905. Greater Heights Tree Trimming, $1,395. Hydro Hammer purchased for $2,000. IRS for $3,029.33. IRS for $2,095.49. For $58,091.29. Can I entertain a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Okay. Payroll for 43021, $8,840.93. Payroll for 5721, $9,593.73. Payroll for 51421, $8,940.40. Can I entertain a motion, please?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to correspondence. Was there anything from you, Rebecca?
Well, I think you had talked about it. We did receive one email from a citizen talking about the bike riders on our roads, but we did discuss that in the traffic ordinance, in case people missed the traffic ordinance hearing, that we will be creating, it is already in our ordinance that they must ride single file on the right side along with the flow of traffic, and we will be creating, or Megan will, or I will, create an informational flyer about that, just to make sure it's up wherever we can, and we'll make sure Williams College gets it. I don't know where else we would send it, but.
And it's number 28, if anybody's looking for it.
Yeah, number 28 on the traffic ordinance, okay. And for correspondence, that feels like.
We also had.
Oh yeah, the speeding on South Stream Road, cars speeding on South Stream Road, and I do, and we did forward that to the sheriffs, and they did, they changed some of their, some patrols in the area.
Okay, and we had a resignation from Fred Miller from Parks and Rec.
From Parks and Rec, so we do, we actually have several positions, openings on Parks and Rec, I think we have at least three. So if, also Parks and Rec, listen, if you want to come and be involved, and all the spots are taken, come on in. It's Parks and Rec, we have no real decision making, you know what I mean? The more the merrier on that committee, as far as I'm concerned, so, but we do have openings, so if there's any citizens that are interested, they can send us a letter of interest to info@townopanell.org.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to work proposal for the office. Is that you as well?
That is me as well. So Megan, Tim and I sat down to create, and it's in here, it's after your warrants in your packet. There is a document that we created, if you want to follow it. We created a work plan for the way the three of us, we actually work very, very well together, and we are trying to kind of formalize how we work together, who does what, who has supervision over what. So this is what we've created, and I'll just read through it. It's after your warrants in your packet, it starts, yeah, okay, work proposal. So Tim, his work hours are Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, in the office, except on the weeks where he stays late for the meeting. So tonight, he's been here since 8. He's probably not leaving until 8, so tomorrow he will leave early, you know, because he's going to keep his hours around 40.
Can I just make a suggestion, Tim, if you want to come in later, you can come in later.
On a Thursday, yeah.
I mean, if you come in at noon.
And so Megan's work hours, this is actually going to be new, and we talked about it, Mike was here when we were talking about it, we think it's a really great idea. Megan is going to be here on Mondays from 10 to 6, because she's at 40 hours now. Then Tuesday through Thursday, she's going to come from 1 to 9, because she's going to be here for all those evening meetings, she's helping with Parks and Rec, she's helping with Planning Commission, and also, we were thinking it's great to have some after-work hours. Nobody can ever call and leave a message, you know, and get a live person in the evening. So Tuesday through Thursday, she's going to be here until 9, and then Fridays, she'll be here again, 10 to 6. This is all in office. My work hours, as you know, have gone down quite a bit, about 20 to 23 hours a week flex, and/or as needed, there may be times where it's less, or maybe times when it's more. My goal is to have one to two days in the office when Megan and Tim are here. I don't work Fridays, that's my day with my kids, and as you know, I'm kind of moved a little further away now. I'm still going to, my goal is to be here one day a week, probably Thursdays, I'll get here when Tim does, and I'm going to do a whole day and just work in the office, okay? The rest of the week, I'll do my work from home. So, direction of supervision, we thought this was important to add. Tim will be the direct supervisor for Megan regarding all office management and tasks. Rebecca will be the direct supervisor for Megan regarding communications, because she's picking up the newsletter and Facebook. And at some point, I'll probably be able to just not worry about that with her. Tim and Rebecca, where, so the two of us are going to be mutually accountable and serve as authorization. We authorize each other's time sheets and things like that, so we are the second set of eyes for each other. Office staff plans to meet once weekly to update each other on our tasks and make plans and organize, and a board member is always welcome to come to that. All disciplinary action will be taken by the select board. None of us have any disciplinary powers over any of the others. Office staff, we have created a Slack channel, we haven't really used it much yet, but we're going to get into it, so that we can all see each other's schedules and help each other stay on task. So we're all going to know what each other are doing and working on. Yes, it has a shared calendar, shared documents, we've also created a OneDrive, which is where we're uploading all of our documents, we're digitizing everything. So general duties, just as a redefinition of them, Tim, who's the executive assistant, he does office management and all related tasks, payroll and accounts payable, administration, HR, benefits management, overall task management for issues and projects of the select board, website management, or, you know, that main liaison there. Liaison to the Economic Development Committee, when and if we have one. That is a little foretaste of what I'm planning for the grant programming, which I'm going to present at the next meeting. Grant facilitation on the back end, help with budget creation for grant applications, and annual budget assistance will be managing your budgeting process. So administrative assistant, who is Megan, she does assistance with office management and related tasks as delegated by the executive assistant. All agendas and minutes for the DRB, Planning Commission and Select Board, assist the zoning administrator, permitting, task management for DRB and PC, legal warnings, newsletter, Facebook management, website management, or helping with website. We all do content for the website, help with grant seeking, and she's been helping with Parks and Rec becoming that liaison for the Parks and Rec Committee, because she's here in the evenings. Board liaison, which is me, communications with state entities is needed, I'm still doing all your legal assistance, liaison to Town Council, assistance in all legal matters, grant narrative writing, community outreach and organization, content and communications writing, liaison to the press, public records management and requests, and public informational presentations, and I usually do most of the communications with residents on larger issues. So, that's what we created, just as a document where you can see everything that we're doing, when and how. Supervision, what's that? A quick, a quick easy template and description of who's doing what here and when, and we were hoping that you would, you know, if you have any amendments to it, we can do that, and we're hoping that you would just kind of give it a little wave of approval, so that you guys all know.
I think you guys have been working really great together, and, I mean, just coming in the office, all you guys have been going, there's a whole change of atmosphere here, so I think, you know, kudos to all of you.
I agree with that, 100%.
I think, one thing Rebecca touched on for me, is I noticed, it really was a super strong point for me, was that we have office coverage now, five days a week, and not just for somebody who's retired or whatever, but with the extended hours, the three days a week, we have those hours for people who work and work out of town, and they can come in and do whatever they need to do, or at least have some access to it. So I think, I think that's a tremendous improvement, I really do. I've witnessed you guys, because I've been in here working on the town hall project with all of you guys, I've witnessed what goes on, and I'm extremely happy with this work, work proposal, office staff, management tasks, I think it's, I think it's working very well. And I, and I've witnessed it several times, you know, in the last month, you know, I've been in and out of here quite a bit. So I'm, I'm very, I'm very good with it. The only thing that I have a question of is, could we post this on our websites, so that, so that our residents know these are the tasks for the ones who missed tonight's meeting, for whatever reason, they, there's no question, this is, this is what's going on in the office, this is what everybody's doing, and who to talk to if you need to talk to somebody.
I'll just put this right up there.
Yeah, this is a perfect document to put on there, I'm just, I just, you know, think that putting it on, out there for the general public that's not involved in tonight's meeting, there's no question, this is what's going on. These are the hours that you have available to come in, to talk to whoever, you know, and, and just, I just think it's a great thing.
I agree. Does anybody else have anything to add? We don't need a motion on that, correct?
No, we, no, as long as you, unless anyone has any major issues with it, you know, this is, this is more, this is not even like, this is what, this is not what we will do, this is what we are doing.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, do you have anything to add?
I know, I'm good. Well, other than, I think both Tim and Megan have been doing a great job, I think that was definitely a great end.
As well as Rebecca, thank you very much. Ronnie, did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Excellent, moving on to the town hall opening to the public.
You're the one who's read all that, right, Tim? All the new regs, okay.
Sure, so we just took this on the agenda so that we could start to get ahead of it, and get some clarification on when and if we want to open up to the public. I think the sense is that, yes, we should. The regs, and especially, I think, all kinds of new federal regulations just came out today, so I have to kind of backtrack and see where they fit into Vermont in a few days, but it looks like it's doable. After July 1st is sort of when the state of Vermont is looking to have things open up a little more. It doesn't mean much will change as far as having to wear masks and keep things distanced that much for us, because it's such a small space. But that's what, where things are heading.
I would also want to say that, that we were talking about this today, Tim, Megan and I, that, well, Tim and Megan don't really know what it was like in here prior to COVID, but there are some benefits that have happened, this is, as you know, a really difficult space to work in, and the distractions are now a lot less, the fact that, that we're not constantly open to the public. My personal preference, and this is not, and this is not even as someone who's here a lot, but for everyone else, is that there would be times, keep the times that we're open, we should open to the public, but it shouldn't be all week, every time someone is here, I think, because it's really difficult when people are just showing up at the door, especially for the person sitting right there, to get their work done.
Right.
So I would say we're open, but certain days, maybe it's by appointment still, or something like that. There's some committed times to, until we get the new town hall, in which case we'll have someone in a receptionist, you know, position kind of, and it'll be different there, have a door to shut.
I agree.
I, I agree with that, because, because I think, especially now, especially with the new work proposal that we just went over, because we have ample time for where every resident in, in the town should be able to find the time, Monday through Friday, to, to be able to come in, buy an appointment, exactly. Right, because, because we do have, we do have, I, I think we should be able to have some times, you know, I think, you know, and I think a lot of it does have to do with Tim. I think if Tim's doing his accounts payable and all of that stuff on Mondays, which I think are your days that you normally do it, you know, from 8 to noon or whatever, give you that four-hour period where the town office is not open to the public while you're doing certain tasks, and I, I think you're pretty regular on the tasks, you know, when, when you do them. And I, I think that's extremely important, to let him concentrate on that stuff. And I, and I think that's probably where some of the mistakes have happened in the past.
Absolutely.
You know, in all fairness.
Yeah, the distractions are.
Distractions.
This also relates, however, to the staff, and it's, it's my personal opinion that we don't need to stagger our shifts. That if you work here and you have an office here, you should be able to walk in whenever you need to do your work. We do not need to have separate days, we can take that thing off the whiteboard.
All the way.
Yeah, just come in, if you need.
Come in and work.
Come in and work.
Come in and work.
Absolutely.
You know the social distancing regulations, wear your mask, so.
Come in and work.
Yeah. All right, everybody good? All right, moving on to number seven, new town hall transitional funding approval.
Yeah, so, in your packet, and I passed it around earlier for you to have a look at, which is the bond anticipation note for $450,000. The whole process went very smooth with People's United. So all that's necessary this evening is for you to vote to approve that, and then we can have Angie sign it, and send it off to the bank tomorrow, and we will be.
Immediately able to draw, right?
Yes, if we, if necessary, we could. And the interest rate was 1.55%. It's due, we have to pay back whatever we've used within 30 days after the bond becomes available to us. That process has also been submitted and is sailing along smoothly, I've only heard one peep back from them, which was for a minor PDF they needed. So, we'll know within the month of May, early June, whether we're approved for that, and it's, it's more of a process of becoming approved for it, it's not a denial, nothing to worry about.
Okay.
So, 1.55%?
Yeah, 1.55, Bob.
Yes.
Oh wow.
So can we, can we talk about the town hall a little bit?
Yeah.
Our meetings that we've been, that we've been having the last couple of weeks.
Without a quorum.
That's right, the meetings, the meetings that have taken place in the last, since our last board meeting, have been with, we've met with Mike Connors, and when I say we, I mean me, Mike Gardner, Rebecca Dragon, and Tim Garter, our team that's working on the town hall project. We have met several times with our builders, with Aaron and Eric, sometimes together, sometimes singly, it depends on their schedule. We've met with Mike Connors, last Friday, Tim. Mike Connors doing the building and the excavating, moving the schoolhouse and the excavating. One of the things that came up from our new builders was they wanted to preorder some materials, to preempt the price increases all the time. So we've done that. We are, we have secured through Miles Lumber, our building materials. They have several people that work at Miles who actually live in Panale. So that was kind of the reason we went with Miles. What am I missing, Tim? Mike Connors is on board, we, we've got some things that we have to do to move the building, you know, some minor. I don't know the timeframe of moving the building, you know, he didn't give us one.
But he knows the set date.
He, that's right, Mike Connors knows the, the projected set date for the building, for the modular system is August 31st, he knows that.
Aaron and Eric again with the electrical contractor and the fire.
Right, tomorrow's another meeting with Aaron and Eric, our builders, and our electrician, for some questions on the electrical, questions on the fire alarm. We're in good shape, foundation plan wise, we haven't got any concrete numbers, but, there you go, concrete numbers. Well, what a funny, anyways. Yeah. So, so things are, things are moving in a really positive direction on the town hall project. I mean, I'm, you know, where Mike Connors has inquired about, you know, some different things, he's totally on board, we're, we're good to go. We're good to go.
Excellent, do we, will we wait for the next one?
Yes. Yeah, when we. That's right, when we, when we have a solid plan, I want to be speaking about solid plans every time that we have, and these are solid plans that we have in place right now with our, with our builders, we have the solid date, we have, we have, you know, confirmation from Mike Connors. These are just solid things that we've been working on in the last two and a half, three weeks, or whatever it's been.
And I'll, I'll, because I did this before, I'll make another quick little update, throw it up on Facebook, so that way these are constantly coming out and able to be disseminated, okay?
Right, so people know what's going on, I just wanted to bring that up, just so people know what's going on. I didn't want to take up any more time, but, you know. So I make a motion that we approve the transitional funding for the town office.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
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 Angie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to conservation of additional land at Quarry Hill Natural Area.
So that's, I can speak on that for a minute, because I read that.
Okay.
The Conservation District down, they already own some land in the quarry, and the proposal from, they, they've acquired some land from the Dodge family off on Quarry Hill, now makes this a continuous piece of property, from two pieces of property that they had, and they did not have continuous, they couldn't, they couldn't go from one piece to the other without crossing someone else's property, so now they can. All they're looking for is, from the select board, is a vote of confidence, I guess you'd call it, or, or, you know, we don't have to give them a semi or a formal approval, it's just kind of a, as far as I read, it's kind of a, yeah, go ahead, it's a great project type thing. There is, there is, I don't believe there are any restrictions on it, you know, as far as hunting and fishing, not that there's any fishing there, but people, people are allowed to use that conservation area, but it does not give them access to the private land around the conservation area. They were, they're still going to need to gain permission to use any of the private land, but they, they do have, they can use the conservation land for, you know, hunting or whatever recreation they want to use it for. You know, within reason, I don't.
Right, just not to interrupt, but my name's John Benhammer, I'm with the Nature Conservancy, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
How did I do, John? I didn't realize you were there.
Quite well, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No worries. I was just hiding with my, with my video on.
Yes, well, I did, okay, was I correct?
Yes, you did, yes, you did, absolutely. Excuse me?
Anything to add?
Just that, you know, we're pleased to, you know, work in concert with, I think, your town plan, you know, definitely mentions certain areas like this one, that should be conserved for their forest resources, and, and other natural resources on them, and, and we do allow for public access, and, you know, non-motorized public access, and we do allow hunting, and so, would appreciate your support. And, and the, the reason I'm asking for your support is because the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board is one of the entities that we have requested funding for, for this project. So, they require us to talk with the town, and to get the town's opinion of the project, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Bob?
Let's drive it side by side.
I think he's on mute, he's not, he's muted. Bob's trying to talk and I can't hear him. Bob, we can't hear you.
Sorry, no, no questions.
No questions, thank you. Ronnie, do you have any questions? Mike?
No, I'm, I'm extremely happy with it, I think, I think it was a great, like I said, I think it was a great purchase to, to put everything in one continuous, without having to cross private property. Now, now it gives people access to both ends of it, and, and, you know, without having to cross the private property.
Excellent, so you have our blessing, thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right, take care.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye. All right, number 10, award pickup truck bid.
Well.
All right. I did have one person come to me and say that they didn't think this was fair, because they work for a different company, they don't have their 2020, is it 22, yeah, 2022 numbers and prices, so they're not allowed to bid at this point. And I kind of agree with them. I think we should do whatever we can to get the best price for the taxpayers of the town of Panale. So, Mike, do you have anything to add?
I, I do, I, I have a couple of things on this. I do think that, that, and I'm not saying this isn't the best price, because it may very well be.
It may stand.
But I know that, I know that the last truck that we bought, and I was not on the bid process, and I apologize 100% to. And I apologize one hundred percent to Joel on this one because I should have caught this before. Because this kind of irritated me on the last one. When, when I became a board member and we were so delayed in the truck. I have a problem with our bid spec sheet because there's no penalty. There's no penalty for a delay in the delivery of this truck. Now, I know the last one was a little bit COVID related. That truck was supposed to be delivered to us in October, if I remember correctly, or November. And we didn't take possession of that vehicle until July. So we got a truck that was already a year old. That we paid a, a price on from the previous year. So, so I have a problem with that. I think, I think we need some sort of a penalty in, in there for delays on that. And, you know, maybe not, maybe not on this one. I don't know if we decide, whatever we decide we're gonna do. But I think moving forward, I think we need to have that in there, whether it's on a pickup or a loader. Or, or whatever we're buying as property. It's hard to do it on, you know, the gravel bids or blacktop or whatever, but when we're purchasing something, we're buying a two thousand twenty-two truck. If we don't get that truck until July of twenty twenty-two, it, it's already a year old before we take purchase of that truck. Um, and that, and, and I just had a problem with that. I do have a problem with, with not being able to. Have all of the manufacturers potentially have a, have an opportunity to bid on it. Um, I, I just, I have, I do have a little bit of a problem with that. Not because, in my opinion is this, and it was this when I was fire chief. Um, you may like a Dodge, you may like a Chevy, you may like a whatever Ford. Look, you're not going to get groceries in and you're working in it every day. We need to do our due diligence as select board members. To make sure that we're getting the best deal for the town of Powell. And by when I say best deal, my opinion is it's not always the low bidder. It's not always the low bidder, in my opinion, that gets the bid for me. That's just me personally. It's, it's the best deal. It's the best service. It's the best, you know, whatever, whatever it is. Um, that's just my opinion on it.
So.
I, I, I agree with what Mike is saying. Um, uh, mostly, or at least with the goals. But I would caution about writing something into, into our contracts and our bids. Uh, 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 if somebody doesn't deliver, that's a good reason not to go back to them in the future. Um, but if you write it into the contract, you may get higher bids. Uh, you may get higher bids or fewer bids. So there is a downside to it. We, we need to carefully weigh the, the pros and the cons here. Because, uh, the harder we are to do business with, the fewer people will want to do business with us.
Well, and that, you're absolutely correct, Bob. And unfortunately, we only got one bid on this vehicle. The other unfortunate part is it's the same person who delayed the last one. It's the same.
Well, that, that's true. And maybe that speaks to us being difficult to do business with. And now we, we, and now we go further in that direction.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, you know, so yeah, that, we're in a kind of a catch twenty-two on that one. We got one bid and it's the same person. So, yeah, I, you know, I totally agree. You know, um. It just, you know, it's just, I, I, it's just me, you know, and I'm, and I'm one opinion.
And I, I totally agree that lowest price is not necessarily the best deal for Powell. It's, what is the service? How long is, is the vehicle reliable? I mean, it's the, the cost, total cost of ownership is not just, is not just the sticker price.
Exactly.
So my question is, could we reopen the bids?
We don't have to accept any, we don't have to accept this bid. Absolutely not.
To extend it so the other companies have a chance to bid.
I don't think you can extend this bid. I think you have to, I'm pretty positive legally, we have to.
Re.
Um, say we reject the bid and then we rebid.
What was Joel's rec, what, is, does this come with the recommendation from Joel?
And that's why, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of, I was hesitant to speak on this. Because Joel and I have a pretty solid working relationship and I, I respect him immensely. And, and I respect the job that his guys are doing every day. Um, it's not easy. They fight the weather, even, even trying to grade whatever they're trying to do. They're fighting the weather constantly. You don't get, you, 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 you know, just think about how many days we've had this, this spring and summer. Or spring, we're not summer yet, you know, and, and they're making some pretty good headway on, on the roads. So I'm, I'm really, I was really hesitant to even talk about this, this way because this is Joel's recommendation. But I just think that, that in the future or whatever, we really need to be more, um, aware as a board. Of, of what's going on out there. And, and like I said, I mean, those guys, they're doing, they're doing a really good job. I mean, I, you know, I ride the roads a lot. I, I take my dogs. I ride the roads, uh, you know. Um, I know what's going on. I know, I know, and it's not to see what they're doing. It has nothing to do with that. It's my dogs, my dogs love to ride the truck, so I, you know, that's the, that's just me and the dogs.
For the school buses as well.
Well, and I do it for the school buses, but I, you know, the buses don't run, don't run the, the, all the roads that I run. I, I'm in Shastberry. People, you know, I, I do, for the roads in Shastberry. That's, you're absolutely right, Angie. I do.
Okay.
For part of my job. It's on my own time, but.
Right. So what's your pleasure? Well, I have a motion.
Well, how, how imminent is the, I mean, uh, it, Joel's recommendation is to, is to buy it. I mean, I, I, uh, I agree with a lot of what Mike said, but I think we need to do it. So I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we go with Joel's recommendation and purchase.
You want to hold off, see if we can take and get three bids?
You don't have to second the motion.
I, I just said, I just didn't know if he understands.
Yep. No, he under, Bob understands. He's a businessman. He knows what's going on.
All right. I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Motion denied.
Okay. Well, uh. I'm sorry.
Nothing personal, Bob.
No, 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 I understand. Uh, and, and I'm not, I don't take anything personally.
Okay.
But we should reach out to Joel and find out how imminent the need is. Because we are delaying the delivery by, by, uh, by what we're doing. Well, probably delaying the delivery.
Well, and our, in that, in the bid, Bob, it said, uh, two hundred days. Which I did some really quick calculations, puts us into November anyways. Um, and I think, I think any manufacturer probably would be in that same range, you know, if they were able to bid on it.
That's a good question.
I, I think, I think Dodge is fairly close to being able to, um, come up with some twenty twenty-two pricing. I do not believe that General Motors is. I think GM is still a little bit out for, for some pricing. So my. If we were gonna rebid, my recommendation would be to, um, have it due in thirty days. And if any, if nobody can bid, if the other companies aren't able to bid and rebid in thirty days, then so be it. We've, we've done our due diligence and we've at least attempted to make it available to all manufacturers. And, and different dealers or whatever.
Uh, it, it's hard to predict the market and where it's gonna go, but we do know that right now we're in a period of pretty rapid inflation. So going back out to bid risks higher prices.
All right. So do I have a motion to back out to bids?
I make a motion that we rebid, um, this truck.
I have Joel. Can I, I'm, can I put you on speaker?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Hold on. All right.
Hi, Joel. Can you hear us, Joel?
Hold on.
Oh.
All right. Hi, Joel.
Oh, Joel, you have to turn off whatever you're listening to us on so you can only hear us through the phone. Okay?
All right. There you go, Joel. Now we can hear you. Thank you. Go ahead, Joel.
Okay. The only thing with putting this back out to bid, two things is, uh, uh, time constraints. Because the farther we push this back, um, like Bob said, the longer it's gonna drag out. But the biggest thing to put this back out for bid, now that everybody knows what the one bidder. The only bidder we had that actually bid on time is prices. It's not fair. So everybody's just gonna try to, uh, work that, you know what I mean, to, to beat his price. It, it's not fair to the bidder that did bid.
But we haven't set any price.
Oh, that was the end of the date, wasn't it?
Well, well, yeah.
Today was the last day.
You all have the price and, and, um, you know, we, we all know, um, you know. Going to, I guess, bid Dodge and, and, uh, GM, so they already know the price. It, it's not a fair, it, it's not fair to do that. You know, if they wanted to get in and out of the bid, they should have put a bid in.
But if they can't bid, but if they can't bid because, because it's, it's, um, they don't have twenty twenty-two pricing, it's not fair to them. Plus Joel, if you want to get into, if you want to cut tax here, this is, this is a one hundred percent Ford SPAC.
Yeah, that, that's right.
It's a hundred percent geared towards a Ford.
That's right. Not, not a hundred percent, but.
Ninety-eight.
Pretty, pretty close.
It's their, it's Ford terminology.
Well, yeah, we, because that's what I'm kind of familiar with as, as far as. But again, I don't have any, any problem with, uh, with a Dodge. But, um, you know, I still say it's not fair to the bidder that already bid.
And I agree with that. I, I, I don't disagree with that at all. I, I really don't.
Um, you know, I don't think, maybe you did. I didn't have any idea that there was, uh, an issue with any of the other. Uh, uh, companies, you know.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't either until, until, you know, we had that discussion. I, I, I did not know that there was a problem with the other, um, the other manufacturers being able to come up with. With twenty twenty-two pricing right now. I had no idea.
Well, I, you know, like I say, do what you guys want to do, uh, time wise. I'd like to go through with it. And I really, uh, as far as the, the dealer that bid, uh, nobody really said it. I had in my letter. Well, the time it took us to get the last truck was really more COVID related. The truck was there with the body manufacturers. Um, this one, we're not gonna do a body. We're just gonna put a snowplow on it. Um. Other than that, uh, they're very good on service. Like I said, we have a problem. They come up and get it. They bring it back to Greenwood. They fix it. Uh, they run it back to us and service has been very good with them. Just to, you know, answer your question on service. So do what you want to do. I just wanted to put my two cents in on that one.
And I, and, and we appreciate, I appreciate it.
We appreciate everything that you do, Joel. We know that you work hard. We really do.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything else for Joel since he's on, you, here on the phone or?
No, I don't.
All right. Joel, I'm gonna hang up and you can go back to your computer to listen. Call me back if you need something else. Okay? All right. No problem. Bye.
And, and he is, he, he has some valid points. He definitely, um, has some valid points. Um.
Well, it sounded like spoke positively about their service too.
Yeah, I, I mean, my, one of my problems is, is the, um. The delay in the truck. I, I understand that there were some COVID stuff involved in there or whatever, but I, I'm also. Pretty much not buying into a lot of the COVID delays that are out there. I think that's an excuse. And has been used and, and they could use it well. So, you know, but that's my, there again, that's my personal opinion. So. I, I think, I think one of the biggest things that, that we need to do is, and Joel's probably right. Well, he's definitely right. Is that it, it wouldn't be fair for the other manufacturers now with the price that's out there. I think in, in the future, when, if, if we did vote to go with this truck. At this time, I think in the future, I think we need to be more aware as a board. To that potential, um. Situation coming up again.
As far as the marketing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, I think we need to be more, more aware of that, you know, to be fairer to other manufacturers. Out there, you know, or, or, or other dealers that have different, the, that represent the other manufacturers, I guess is how I should put it. So.
Okay. So I'm sorry. I can't remember if there was a motion.
Well, Bob made a motion to.
And that died.
And that made a motion, but he didn't get a second.
So we can try again.
Okay. Can I entertain a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, purchase, uh, the pickup as per, uh, Joel's recommendation.
Okay. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Mike?
abstaining.
Angie, aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, everybody. I know this was a very hard decision because we want to do what's right for everybody.
The price of it's actually.
And the price. Yeah. Okay, moving on to number eleven.
Exactly why.
L E M P approval. Did everybody read it? I think it all looks correct. I looked at it like so many times and every time I look at it, I think I see something, but then I go back and it's fine. So you've made all those changes with Kevin Davis and. Oak Hill. So we're good.
Make a motion, we accept it.
The only one thing is Steve Zimmer is on this one. Is this an old one?
Steve Zelman.
Or Zelman, I mean, I thought the.
I saw Leonard Cody on this.
So didn't I? So this must be.
You must have an older version.
Must have an older version. That's fine. As long as that's changed.
I was just looking at it.
I read it that it was Leonard Cody.
I have Leonard Cody here.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I annotate a motion to approve? Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Come on and get with this program.
Ronnie?
Okay.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Let's pick up the pace, girl.
All right. We're gonna open up for public comment. Did we skip number eight?
Oh, yes, we did signage for town hall.
Oh, my gosh. I have a check mark on it.
Hey, hold on. All right, quick, Todd. Here, Tim.
No, that's not me.
Who is it? Me? Might be me.
I think it's you.
Oh. Uh, we're just, you, all right. I'm making a, since I don't even really, really remember what it is.
I'm sorry.
I believe this refers, I, I know it's been a long day. Um, I, I believe this refers to, um, we would like to. Create, oh, we need to create a small built-in thing with all the plans that has a Plexiglas in front of it. For the signs for when, um, they are working there. For the place, for the placement of the new town hall says, oh, you know, here is the site of the new town hall. And the plans need to be posted there and we need to put a protective thing in front of it. Um, we would like permission. I, I can't imagine. They're terribly expensive, but we'd like permission to kind of price that out and, and get that thing going down there. If you want to give us like a top number.
Make a motion.
But give me a top number of that what? How much?
Five hundred bucks.
Five hundred bucks. Well, I, well, let me see if I can do it for five. If I can do it for five hundred, then I'll need to come back to you. If I need more, I'll come back to you. How about that?
Five hundred bucks.
All right. That motion for five hundred. Second. All right.
Ronnie?
Okay.
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right. Sorry about that. Can we please open up public comment now? If there's anybody out there, please remember to say your full name. Please raise your hand. Again, there's nobody there?
No one's raising their hand.
All right. So then I need a motion to go into executive session for illegal.
Make a motion, we move to executive session. Make a motion, we move to executive session for legal with potential action pending.
Can I have a second?
So Cat TV stays.
Yes, Cat TV stays.
Okay.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Okay, um, Megan, can you put everybody in the waiting room, please?
I don't know if we're gonna take action, but it covers our ass.
Yep.
Oh my god. All right, back into regular session at eight oh five. Can I entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we send a sheriff. To collect any and all town property, to include, uh, paperwork, any files. And return them to the town office.
A second. Any further discussion?
I think we have to say from, uh, from the, uh.
From the former health officer, oh, yes, or the job of the former health officer.
Okay.
Position of.
All right, I second that. Ronnie?
Okay.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, so I have one other thing. We need to post that position again, please. Do that again, please, for health officer.
Oh, good.
We do have two interested parties, but it's not been posted.
Correct, we have to post it first, all right?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it. Any further discussion? Ronnie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Okay.
Bye. Thank you, everybody.